All righty. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, September 22. It is approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. I'd like to now invite up, we have Boy Scout troop here with us, Troop 931, correct? Gentlemen, why don't you come on up and help lead us in the pledge? And before you do that, why don't you just introduce your group, tell us where you meet, and what you're here for tonight? Guys, we need all of you, come on up here.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And without a cue? Thank you, Chief.
That was a routine. Who's that smart-looking guy in that suit of things?
I know.
All those stripes mean is I'm really close to retirement. Nothing else matters.
You still have room on your sleeves.
I think I got a lot of our left there.
A lot of our left, almost out of space.
We know Gil might want you at home, but she's just gonna have to wait. We're not ready to let you go.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. If y'all would like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we ask for your prayers and blessings for all the audience in attendance today. We pray for the Boy Scouts that are here and their leadership, and, Lord, we ask your blessings on them as they engage in so many wonderful activities that give back to the community in so many ways. Lord, we're gonna recognize some recipients tonight, all who are willing to step up and take action in the time of need. We ask that you would grant them good health, and that you would bless these families, and that you would bless the church congregation from which they have come. Lord, we pray for our nation, we pray for our elected leaders. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. And Chief, first item is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, it's always a great joy to present to you accolades that come from time to time. And tonight, we're gonna recognize some citizens of the Oviedo region as well that played an instrumental role in saving a life. And the Carol Ann Methodist Church members acted very quickly and proficiently. We're pleased to say that this is one of the safest congregations, because they have an AED device at their church. But some of their staff, and ministerial staff, and just members of the congregation jumped into action, began emergency life-saving care. Our services were called. Seminole County Station happened to be busy at that moment, so Oviedo was next in the first-response program. We got there and continued those great efforts as well. So we're gonna call them up one by one, but before I do that, we'd like to ask Janet Livingston to also come up and say a few words, and then we'll ask you, Mayor, and council, to come down. We'll call these folks up one by one and present a certificate. Janet?
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. As Chief White said, I'm Janet Livingston. I'm the administrator at the Oviedo ER. And I'd also like to introduce John Penzella, who is our EMS coordinator. We would really like to be able to be, we're very pleased to be here tonight, and to be able to recognize the citizens who provided just extraordinary care to a patient of ours. And then also, we'd like to say a few words regarding Oviedo Fire Rescue. So Chief White, if you'd like to go ahead first?
Very good. Thank you, Janet.
And just for the audience's pleasure, Janet is our chief administrative officer at the Oviedo Central Florida Regional Hospital. We're glad to have her. Mayor, if you would please, and council, come down and join us. And at this time, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to our mayor. We'll call you up one at a time, present the certificate, and if you would remain standing up here to our left, that would be appreciated.
All righty. Well, the first recognition we have tonight, first, I have to say, it is quite an honor to stand up here and be able to present these awards. I mean, for folks like yourselves to put yourselves either in danger or to help another person, and to aid the fire department like this, with no regards for yourself, just regards for them, is completely outstanding. And, folks, we should give them a big round of applause. All righty. The first certificate is from Mr. Mike Coffey. Mike, why don't you come on up? And the certificate reads, "From the Oviedo Fire Rescue Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Mike Coffey for your actions contributing towards saving a life associated with an EMS call at Carol Ann Methodist Church on August 17, 2014," and it is signed by Chief White. Mike, thank you so much. And, folks, I apologize for my voice. Second one we have is for Charlie Crampton. Yes, this is what happens when your wife works in the school district. They bring all these germs home. Charlie? Good move. I don't think I'm contagious. "The Oviedo Fire Rescue Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Charlie Crampton for your actions contributing towards saving a life associated with an EMS call at Carol Ann Methodist Church on August 17, 2014," and it's signed by Chief White. I'll get it disinfected first, and then I'll have it handed over to you. Next recipient we have is Matt Clark. Matt, this reads, "Oviedo Fire Rescue Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Matt Clark for your actions contributing towards saving a life associated with an EMS call at Carol Ann Methodist Church on August 17, 2014," and again, signed by Chief White. Great job. Thank you. Matt just asked Chief how many years he had. Chief responded 31. I think he still has 10 in him, so. We've already told him we're not accepting any type of retirement paperwork, so. Next up, we have Joe Manuel. Okay, we will save this one for Joe.
Mayor, just real quickly, we'll maintain patient confidentiality, but the patient's wife is in attendance today. Nancy, would you like to come forward? No? Okay. Well, we just wanted to recognize you as well.
Who do we have next, Chief?
Fire rescue members.
All righty. How many of them we got? All righty. Let me bring them all up at once. Okay, gentlemen. Why don't we have, come on up, we got, thank you. We have Benjamin Clark, Gary Skambadi, Justin Karnes, Jason Strain, and John Savis. Guys, all come on up. Great job. And I'll read the one that I, one of them that I have here. It's again, "Oviedo Fire Rescue Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to all of these gentlemen for your actions contributing towards saving a life associated with an EMS call at Carol Ann Methodist Church on August 17, 2014." Gentlemen, you make us proud all the time. You do know that. The citizens appreciate everything that you do, all day long. When that buzzer goes off, you guys just run, and whatever it is, a burning building, a heart attack, a crash, you never know what you're gonna come up against, you just make us so proud. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the Oviedo ER, we wanted to be able to come tonight and recognize you gentlemen for the extraordinary care and the aid that you provided to our, to the patient that you brought in. Doing what you did made such an incredible positive change and outcome from what could have been happening. So at this time, we'd like to present to you our bags that we give out to EMS, and we give those to our EMS partners that we work with, and we wanna feel that you are also part of the Oviedo ER and partners with us in healthcare. So we really appreciate that. And we also, Chief White, we also certainly wanna be able to recognize the Oviedo Fire Rescue Crew that brought that patient to Oviedo ER. They responded very quickly. They provided advanced stabilization for the patient, brought him to the ER, and they stayed at the ER to be able to support the staff and the physicians in the ER should they need anything else, and then they also transported that patient to Central Florida Regional Hospital. You know, I feel that we are so fortunate in this community that we have not only citizens who respond to an emergency, but we have the very highly-trained, highly-skilled Oviedo Fire Rescue. Thank you.
Oh, wait, we didn't say anybody could leave early.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Mr. Mayor, if we got a few seconds, I just wanted to let everyone know that Mr. Crampton, who's lived up my street, he's been a neighbor of mine for over 20 years.
Poor guy. Our condolences, Mr. Crampton. We get another award just for that.
Let me finish my sentence before you throw me under the bus, but a few years ago, we had a, an incident where there was a home invasion, a woman was taken hostage, and Mr. Crampton's wife was the one who got, got the attention of the law enforcement and saved the day for, for that individual neighbor. So it runs in the family.
Nice. That is cool. Great to hear. Thank you, councilman. All righty. Now we move on to items of business. The first one is the final hearing for the budget for 2014-2015, and it is Resolution Number 2889-14 and 2890-14. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. This is a request for the City Council to adopt the millage rate and budget for fiscal year 1415. And if you would call to your attention in your agenda memorandum, we do have a procedure there based, set forth with, in accordance with Sections 200.0652(c) and (e) of Florida statutes, and we will need to follow those procedures through the adoption of the budget. The FY 2014-15 annual budget is $54,430,653. That is net of inter-fund transfers. The general fund budget for FY 2014-15 is $25,070,020. The millage rate is 5.0434 mils, with general obligation bond issue millage of 0.2546 mils, for a total of 5.2980 mils. It is recommended that City Council read Resolutions 2889-14 and 2890-14 by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt each resolution with a separate motion, please.
Can't roll them all into one, huh?
No, sir. We need to address them separately.
That'll make, that'll make Robin very, you know, nervous if we do that.
Speaking of which, Mr., Ms. Mayor, I would do want to express my gratitude to Ms. Hayes and her team that we've, we've told you about through the different meetings. They've done a phenomenal job this year and deserve all the recognition for the preparation of this budget proposal.
That's very kind of you, Mr. Cobb. We do recognize the fact of all the work that everybody put into it this year, and the council certainly appreciates it as well. All righty. First action item is to state that the proposed millage rate of 5.0434 mils is a millage increase of 9.03% compared to the rollback tax rate of 4.6259 mils. Before I go any further, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council? Seeing none, Ms. Nix, can you read Resolution Number 2889-14 by title only, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2889-14, "Resolution Establishing the Millage Rates to Be Leaving for the Fiscal Year 2014-2015 by City of Oviedo City Government. Adopting the Millage Rates for the 2014-2015 Fiscal Year for the City of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.2980 mils, with 5.0434 mils for the city's operations, and 0.2546 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issue. Expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflicts, separability, and an effective date." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Millage Levy Resolution Number 2889-14.
Unmove. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
No? Councilman? Councilwoman? No, many? All righty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Upon adoption, I will announce that the operating millage rate is now set at 5.0434 mils, which is 9.03% higher than the rollback rate millage rate, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of 0.2546 mils, the overall millage rate for the City of Oviedo is 5.298 mils. Covered all? Robin's happy. Just as a side note, I would just like to announce also to the audience that that is a lower combined operating millage rate than we had in 2004. So we're doing pretty good around here, even with a slight little tick-up. All righty. Ms. Nix, can you please read the budget resolution for me, which is Number 2890-14?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Resolution Number 2890-14, "Resolution Adopting the City of Oviedo's Annual Operating Budget for the 2014-2015 Fiscal Year, Beginning October 1, 2014, and Ending September 30, 2015. Expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflicts, separability, and an effective date." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move that we adopt Resolution Number 2890-14?
Unmove. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Councilman? Nope? Am I right? Nope? All righty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. The fiscal year 2014-2015 annual budget, as Mr. Cobb said earlier, is now set at $54,430,653, and that is net of any inter-fund transfers. Any other business? Mr. Cobb?
No, sir.
Ms. Hayes? Council?
Good.
Nope. Budget hearing is now closed and is set for 2014-2015. Thank you, everyone. Staff, I mean, we really appreciate you coming down this evening. We certainly aren't gonna keep you. You have things to go do. Thank you so much. Unless Mr. Cobb's gonna keep you. He has to excuse you, I guess, technically.
Robin, that means you too. Go. You're good.
I'll tell you what, how about I'll go? All righty. Moving on, approval of minutes. Shank never jumped for the gavel so quick. Moving on to item number three, approval of the minutes for the September 8, 2014 regular session, and the September 15, 2014 work session. What is the pleasure of council?
Make a motion to approve both minutes?
Second.
Motion multiple seconds. Any discussion? Nope. Call the vote all in favor of the motion to adopt, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There was a lot of ayes, right? Five ayes?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number four, public comment. I have no written requests. Anybody in the audience would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, there are items, oh, Mr. Cobb, you filled it up tonight, 5 through 17. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. May?
Councilman Shank, Hankin, excuse me.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Anything, Councilman Hankin?
Looks good.
Councilwoman?
I'm good.
Deputy Mayor?
Good, sir.
All righty. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we are up to ordinance Number 1592, e-cigarettes. Ms. Nix, when you are ready, if you can read that ordinance by title only, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 1592, "An Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida Providing for Regulations Relating to E-Cigarettes or Nicotine Dispensing Devices. Providing for Legislative Findings and Intent. Providing for Definitions. Providing for Prohibitions Relative to E-Cigarettes or Nicotine Dispensing Devices. Providing for Relationship to Controlling Federal and State Laws. Providing for a Savings Provision. Providing for Implementing Administrative Actions. And for Enforcement and Penalties. Providing for Conflicts. Providing for Separability. Providing for Codification. And Providing for an Effective Date." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, can you give us some background, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In the 2014 legislative session, the Florida Legislature adopted new legislation extending the prohibitions related to tobacco to products, related to tobacco products to e-cigarettes. Ordinance 1592 supplements this new state law. It prohibits the sale of e-cigarettes to persons under the age of 18. It prohibits the sale of e-cigarettes and other nicotine dispensing devices, and by the means of self-service merchandising, such as a coin-operated machine. It prohibits placing e-cigarettes and other devices in open display unless they are located in an area that is not accessible to customers. It prohibits the use of e-cigarettes at all locations within the city where tobacco products are prohibited. It allows for enforcement, or local code enforcement procedures, in addition to normal judicial enforcement measures. However, it does not interfere with state or local law application or enforcement. It is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt Ordinance Number 1592.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. It is the adoption hearing of Ordinance Number 1592. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make an ordinance, make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1592.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Shank, anything?
No, thanks, Chief, for bringing this, and the next one to us. Appreciate it.
Councilman Hankin? Councilwoman?
Good.
Are they good? All righty. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Moving along, we're up to Ordinance Number 1593, and this is a co-companion to the last one on designer drugs. Ms. Nix, I'm sorry, could you read Ordinance 1593 by title only, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 1593, "An Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida Providing for the Regulation of and prohibiting the sale, display, delivery, and possession of various synthetic drugs as defined in this ordinance as designer drugs. Providing for Definitions. Providing for Required Warnings and Labeling on Packaging. Providing for Relationship to Controlling Federal and State Laws. Providing for a Savings Provision. Providing for Implementing Administrative Actions. And for Enforcement and Penalties. Providing for Conflicts. Providing for Separability. Providing for Codification. And Providing for an Effective Date." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1593 supplements state laws. It relates to the regulation of designer drugs. The makers of these drugs continually morph their products in an attempt to avoid the controlling state laws which prohibit those products. Ordinance 1593 requires designer drugs to contain a label that has a list of all the ingredients that are listed within, in there, including all chemical compounds and even combinations of chemical compounds. It also requires that the label have a warning that states that the product is not for human consumption, and it also lists certain dangers that could occur through the consumption of it, including death. It requires that packaging of drug paraphernalia clearly contain a warning that says pretty much the same thing, that the ingestion of the drug, illegal drugs and synthetic products may cause a myriad of different ailments, leading up, could possibly lead to death as well. It prohibits the sale, display, or delivery of any kind of designer drug that does not comply with the label requirements that we just described. It prohibits the sale, display, delivery, and possession of any designer drug which contains any substance or compound that is defined by Sections 49303 or Section 893, I'm sorry, Section 893.03, or Section 893.0356 of Florida statutes, and any product that contains a synthetic alternative drug, or synthetic marijuana, synthetic psychedelic hallucinogen, or synthetic stimulant. It prohibits the manufacture, creation, transport, display, sell, or possession of a misbranded drug or consumer commodity, and it requires landlords to stop or take reasonable steps to prevent violations to this ordinance that are on the premises which they have control. It is recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt Ordinance Number 1593.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. As Mr. Cobb stated, this is a public hearing and final adoption hearing for Ordinance Number 1593. I have no written requests to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1593.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, anything? Councilwoman?
I just wanna say, when you look at these pictures, it's rather scary, you know, so good job, Chief.
Councilman Braden?
Good.
Councilman Hankin?
Good.
All righty. Seeing no further discussion, the motion on the table is to adopt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 20, which is Ordinance Number 1596, angle parking. Ms. Nix, can you read this by title only, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 1596, "An Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida Relating to Parking. Prohibiting Backing Into Angle Parking. Providing for Penalties and Enforcement. Providing for a Savings Provision. Providing for Conflicts. Providing for Codification and Correction of Scrivener's Errors. Providing for Separability. And Providing for an Effective Date." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, some background?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. With the city installing angled parking on a few of our city streets, namely Oviedo Boulevard, City Plaza Way, Boardwalk Avenue, we've noticed that a number of residents are pulling it backwards into these parking spaces, which could create unsafe conditions. What this ordinance does, it requires that if you do park in a angled parking space, you must pull in forward, and it prohibits the backing into these spaces. It's a supplemental to state law. It also provides for us to have a local enforcement of these provisions. It's recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance Number 1596.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. As stated, this is a public hearing and final adoption hearing for ordinance Number 1596. I have no written request to speak. Anybody in the audience like to address council on angled parking? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1596?
Make it.
Motion second. Councilwoman, anything?
No. Good.
Councilman Brayden? Councilmember Hankin?
Good, sir.
Good. All righty. Seeing no one else to speak, all in favor of adopting ordinance Number 1596, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No first readings, no resolutions, no discussion items. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a bit of good news for you tonight.
We like good news.
I'll let Ms. Nix take the second bit of good news. I've mentioned to you a few meetings ago that we had received our preliminary population estimate from the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, and that our population was estimated at 35,690. I also mentioned that we were going to review that number against our own records to see if it was a good, reasonable estimate for our city. Through the good work of Mr. Stephen Bell and Mr. Levi Coldiron, I'm happy to report that Bieber has revised our population estimate to increase it by 561 to a 2014 population of 36,251.
Wow. We're growing.
We're growing. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Ms. Nix?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, but I was excited last week to get the letter from the IRS for the Friends of Oviedo to find out that the organization is in fact approved as a tax-exempt organization. So that is great news, and I was able to provide the letter to the board members, and I'm sure we'll be meeting before too long, but that's what it says. It was very exciting to read it, and the effective date is the date of incorporation, as I previously stated to the council. So that's March 12, 2013, and that's just very exciting good news for the board and the council.
It was quick.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nix.
Good news.
Next up, we have Deputy Mayor Shank.
Great football game last Friday night. Went both ways.
What was the final score?
Fifty-five, twenty, I believe.
Read that in the paper.
Not for good part of it. At least half, more than half.
It was boring, right? I wouldn't have to hand out a cup, I would have left.
Very good time. That's it.
Who's up next? Councilmember Hankin?
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of things, and I've been talking to Bobby about this. How do we go about getting some type of program set where we can fix all these bent street signs? Bobby has fixed a bunch that I've called out to him, but, you know, we have a road repaving program. It just gets done. We don't worry about it. But I made it a point this weekend to drive all over the city, like I do every so often, just to look around, and there's so many street signs that either need to be replaced, they're bent, the signs are bent, they just need work. And, you know, when people see that, it just gives them a bad taste, so, you know, it's not something that we can fix tonight, but I think we need some type of program that it just, when people are riding around, you see them, fix them. Don't wait for somebody to call them. Bobby, a great job on the ones that you did, but there's still so many more that just need to be checked, so, you know, if we can figure that out, maybe, Brian, you can just look into that if the rest of the council agrees that that's something we need to look at. Following along those lines, the same thing with potholes. And, Brian, we've had the same conversation. We have so many people out in the field. If they see a pothole, send it in to Bobby so he doesn't have to do it, but we should be proactive. We shouldn't wait till we get calls that we have a pothole. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you brought something back from League of Cities, some program or something.
An app?
An app that people can do, but I think, street signs and potholes, we got to put them somehow into a program like we have with road repaving. You know, we really don't get calls on road repaving because we're always on it, but I don't want to just react to people calling in, my street sign's bent, or I got a pothole. So maybe if you guys could take a look at working on that, how we can do a better job on that. And then finally, you know, I was looking at some emails here. Chief, the exchange you had with the Riverside HOA president regarding this crash gate at Live Oak, and how it would be a good idea for kids to walk through to help, because, you know, all these changes they're making apart, and clearly, you've said it, I've heard a million people say it, that kids walking up through that gate would certainly take more cars off if they knew it was an option, but it seems like nobody knows who has the key. So I have two questions. We got to find out who has the key, and number two, we have to decide who makes the decision whether that gate can be opened or not. Is it Riverside? Is it Live Oak? Can you, I'm just trying to get a sense of what these emails and where they're going.
Well, Councilmember, I looked into it a little farther this afternoon, and there is a key, and the key is in the possession of Live Oak Reserve HOA.
Okay.
They have a key. The question that comes, who's responsible for opening and closing it? The other issue is that, last time it was open, there was a resident on Gamble Oak who was opening and closing it, and to the best of my recollection, it was hardly ever used.
Right.
People living north of that area aren't going to walk back and then go forward.
Right.
The back end gets bust, so it's that, it's the in-between.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what the use would be or who would be responsible.
Well, all these things are being, I've seen this plan of all these things to alleviate traffic, certainly, and now these emails flying with this, certainly it has to be in the discussion. You might be right. There may be people all the way in the back that they're not going to walk up to walk, and it is quite a long walk up to Twin Rivers Boulevard, but, you know, I mean, if it helps, you know. But then again, I'm not sure who decides who does that. Is it the two HOAs that say, yes, we want it open? Is it the City Council, or who decides? So we need a little more homework in that, you know? I think it should be part of the discussion. I never liked that gate myself personally. I think it should be open, but that's another discussion, but, I mean, as long as you're having this conversation, let us know what you think. It should be in with the two left turn lanes, the blinking lights all over the place, you know, it could be another option, you know, and it may be two kids that walk through it, you know? I don't know how many would do it, you know, but I think it's something that we should at least follow up, you know, it's being emailed and discussed. So we can certainly follow up on that. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman?
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, without that television working.
I was at the game, too. I enjoyed it. I missed most of it. I was soaking wet, lost my way, but it was fun. It was fun to watch all the kids interact, and it was my grandson's first high school football game, so he had a ball.
Did he ever?
He did, yeah. On Thursday, I went to Seminole County Chamber Women's Business Luncheon. It was very interesting, and the woman speaking, her message was that you're never too old to make a difference. So I took that to heart. The third one was, we were scheduled to have movie on the park Saturday night, but the weather was just so horrible again, and I think that happened the last time that was scheduled. So I think it's scheduled again, Drew? Is it scheduled to come? Movie on the park?
Eighteenth.
October 18th? October 18th. That is such a fun family time. They're going to be showing Frozen. Again, I'm going to say thank you to Robin and her staff for the great job with the budget and good news with the Friends of Oviedo. I'm real happy about that. Thank you, and that's all I got.
I can't understand something. Speaking of parks, you're talking about parks, I got to tell you something. If you don't think that Oviedo and the park is going to be successful out there this weekend, they're going to lose. There are people walking around that lake, strolling, birds in there. I mean, you can see, everything is falling in place, so if it's getting this much attention now, it's not even carefully done.
That's right.
It's really going to be good activity. So, got to, got to.
I would have to agree with you there.
Yeah.
We do have our resident ducks in the lake now.
That lake has gotten much clearer, you know, the water, the fountain, the lake looks good, so all around, the green is really coming.
The boardwalk, did you see the boardwalk? Did you walk on the boardwalk?
A few little sections, but it's people walking around there.
Yeah, yeah. It's exciting.
Citizens back eleven years ago, hoping for that, we already called it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be nice. Councilmember Brayden?
A couple of things. We had our first eye-on meeting of the year last Thursday, and I was very happily surprised that we had a lot of citizen involvement, some new recruits coming in to help us with that. Kudos to Ben for running the meeting. He's getting better at it. Got us out in about three hours. It was a lot better than before. But there is a meeting tomorrow, a neighborhood meeting down at the, I got to get this right, Refreshing Springs Primitive Baptist Church on the Neese Street. They're going to have a neighborhood meeting with the Seminole County planners on the HUD consolidation plan. I guess that's a grant program that HUD's going to come in, so I'm going to try to stop by. Ben, I think you're going to be there, right? So we'll see if we can get some traction on that program. I guess, next Sunday, if you're all around, you get a chance to dunk me if you want, and who else is going to be in there? Chief!
Mars!
So there's a dunking opportunity coming up next Sunday at the mall. We're going to be running into 5K. You going to run with me, Chief? Okay.
It's actually this Sunday, right? Not next Sunday?
This Sunday. Twenty Sunday, yeah.
This comes.
It's 5K that I'll run in, and then the dunking tank won't be so bad because it'll cool me off, but that's Sunday morning over at the mall. And then I think before we get back, there's a Calno meeting on October 1st that'll be at Seminole State. That'll be our first meeting in a couple of months, so we'll be looking forward to that. That's it.
Great. Yes, go ahead, of course.
I just have one thing that I forgot to left out, but I was thinking about Monday Night Football tonight, but I think it's, and we all agree, that Oviedo now has an NFL starting quarterback, and what a game he had. I mean, for a game that you lost big, you just watched that game and you were so energized. That's like our son is now on the national stage, and clearly he came in, and Blake is going to be one phenomenal thing, so, you know, to him and his family, I mean, they make Oviedo proud. I mean, that was really watching that game Sunday and watching him come in and saying, this is our kid, he grew up here. It was really an incredible moment for the city and obviously for Blake and his family, so a couple of years, maybe we'll have a Super Bowl quarterback. Never know. That was incredible.
Fun fact, they outscored the Colts 17 to 14 when he came in.
Oh, I didn't know, I hadn't realized that. There you go.
Starting next week, San Diego.
He's the permanent starter now. They're not even playing, and Dust Bradley said he is the permanent starter. That's great.
Awesome. Anything else? All righty, real quick. First meeting for the Historical Society was last Tuesday, and they had a, the Oviedo Historical Society, they had a speaker on the Civil War that was excellent. He was a lot of fun. Daniel Greer or Greer? What's that? Oh, Bobby, that was it. Awesome. It was, he was a lot of fun to listen to.